You ready?
Yes.
Good evening. Today is February 19th, 2025. This is a meeting of the Buildings and Utilities Committee. Our chairperson, Mr. Samuel Pierce, is not here this evening, so I'll be sitting in for him. I am Councilman Bob Phillips, and to my right is Councilwoman Lynn Snead. Excuse me, and Mr. Terry Turner, you're going to lead the staff report.
Sure.
Thank you.
So we are asking for authorization to advertise for bids, enter into a contract. This is for the renovation, some renovations at the buildings of Riverside Cemetery. The office area, which is currently the residence, the home formerly, former home. In the 2025 budget, we have $295,000 in the endowment fund, which is the Cemetery Capital Fund. Primary cost is in the office area to create a reception area, a much better office area, if you will, converting some other space into storage. It would add some parking spaces as well as landscaping and redo the front entrance of the actual building. Also, are recommending some upgrades to the chapel. It needs some door lighting, ceiling, and flooring upgrades as well as refinishing of the pew seating that's in the chapel so that we can use it more. You might recall that in the fee schedule update last year, we do now include a nominal fee for the use. We're not going to start charging that until we get those renovations done. Since the cost of that is well over the $75,000, we are asking for authorization to bid. We are not asking for emergency legislation.
Just for clarification, on the endowment fund, this $295,000, are these donations that have come in?
No, these are a portion of the revenues that are brought in from the cemetery. I won't say forever, but for a very long time, a portion of those have been going to the endowment fund from the primary operating fund of the cemetery. And want to say 18 years ago now, we began earmarking the endowment for capital improvements, vehicles, equipment, any kind of renovation.
And I would assume that we do get walk-in folks that come into the office there to conduct business with the cemetery itself?
Yes.
For various reasons.
And this would give some private space to have consultations with the family, relatives, et cetera.
I don't have any other further questions, Mrs. Snead.
I don't think I have any further questions.
Any council folks in the audience have any questions or concerns on this item? Anybody else from the public in the audience have any questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, how do you wish to proceed?
As recommended by staff.
Gotcha. With unanimous with the committee that is present to proceed as staff has indicated, are there any other items to come before the Buildings and Utilities Committee?
No, sir.
Then we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Want me to move into my normal seat?
As long as it's comfortable.
If you could see, that's fine. I guess.
Ready?
Are you going to be up here?
All right. Good evening. This is the committee, the council as a whole, since everybody's situated where they're going to sit for the presentation from the staff over future sewer and utilities, correct? With that, we will turn.
I can give a preamble and then.
We will turn it over to you. We need roll call?
No.
Okay. We'll turn it over to you, and then we'll let staff do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the development and engineering staff would like to give a presentation regarding some challenges and opportunities that we have, or we hope to have anyway, related to the lack of industrial inventory as we look at economic development projects that come in and are unable to apply for or submit sites or buildings to support future growth in the community and adjacent to the community. So with that, I don't want to give too much of a preamble, so I'll turn it over. I believe Development Director is going to lead this off, Tim Davis.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Tim Davis, Development Director. I think I know most everybody in the room, just those viewing at home. So what we're going to talk about today is a growth strategy for industrial land with utility improvements. So we'll give you a background, go through some issues and constraints, talk about investments, the next steps, and of course, a council direction. So starting forward, council priorities and the mayor council biannual priorities are set every two years. For the last several, it's been economic development, safety, and quality of life have been the top three priorities. And like with anything else, with the top three priorities, usually your budget follows. So the city has had millions of dollars invested in economic development. A lot of that is with partnerships with Troy Development Council, the Troy Area Chamber of Commerce, Troy Main Street. It helps fund our overseas trips of recruitment. I think last year was a trip to Europe. This year is a trip to Japan. It funds our business retention and expansion programs. And it's really, the core of that has led to a strong industrial base, which is why for over three decades, we have had no increase in our income tax for, I guess, for 32 years. So it remains at 1.75% due to those outreaches. The city continues to have the strong industrial base. It's grown too as a result of our activities. Recent studies talk about that 80% of new jobs and capital expenditures originate from your existing businesses. So that's why it's so important to reach out to the businesses and make sure that they are well taken care of. As you can see from the next chart, income tax revenues, Troy has gone up since 2016. We see an increase almost every year through that. And again, that's contributed to the outreach we have, our successful businesses that we currently have, and then new businesses that we were able to bring in. So our top 10 employers, you probably are familiar with all of them. I will mention Pella on this list because they were part of a process that we worked with Jobs Ohio and our local partner Dayton Development Coalition. So this was a process where we responded to a request for information on a project. We were lucky enough to be selected in the top 50. And then it's kind of like the March Madness tournament since it's just right around the corner. So you get put into this bracket, if you will, against these other communities, and then we kept surviving. So we made it to the top 25, and then we were into the top 10 and top 5, and ultimately won that project, was the largest project during COVID year in the state of Ohio. So next we have foreign direct investments. A lot of these, you'll see, those are 10 of our companies. Six of them are from Japan. So that's why it's important that we continue to go overseas and do recruitment of not only new businesses, but visit the headquarters of our existing businesses. And then you see the other ones are in Germany and France. So again, very important to keep up our trips and keep those relationships going. So recent company visits, again partnered with Joseph Graves of Troy Development Council. These are some of the ones that we did last year. When meeting with these businesses, we sit down, go through, it's usually the plant manager and human resources. We ask what challenges they have, how can we help, what keeps them up at night, things of that nature. And what we are finding is we have several local industries we currently have in Troy who are looking to expand. The issue is we do not have the inventory to give them land. And so that is kind of what prompted this meeting here today. And to give you an idea of what we currently have, the next slide shows a list of what we call Industrial Park North. So you'll see I-75 on the right-hand side, and then 41. Everything north of that is what we consider Troy Industrial Park North. So the items that are labeled in yellow, those are available lots. You can see we have 122 acres available in this area. Of the 122, one parcel is 90 acres, and the other joining parcel is 15. So 105, 122 is one lot that we have to offer. Everything in orange are companies who are already here. And there are a couple sites that don't have a label on them because they are purchased, just haven't yet been built on, but will be built on in the next year or two. So again, you can see the lack of inventory that we currently have. We have a second industrial park that we call Industrial Park South. This is along Stanfield Road, and it also covers Commerce Center Drive. So right now, we have five lots that are available, consuming just 57 acres. So of that, the Newman site, site number one, is 40 of those 57. So again, we are lacking inventory to bring our current industries or even new industries into our community because of a lack of land. Talk a little bit about the RFI, the Request for Proposals that we receive. So this is numbers from 2024, just last year. We had 77 site selection projects that we were able to apply for that said that they wanted to locate in the Dayton area, which we are a part of. Last year, we were only able to submit for four site selections. And a lot of that is because of the averages and the requests they need. Some need building, some need rail. A lot of them we couldn't do just because we didn't have the land. The largest RFI we received was for 500 acres. That was contiguous. Obviously, we could not apply for that. The average we received, the average RFI is 70 acres. And if you go back to the last slide, we only have one parcel that meets the average. So we are unable to submit for a lot of opportunities that we could have. When we added up the existing items, we're missing out on 3,000 jobs and $425 million of capex simply because we don't have a place to put any new businesses or any existing businesses who wish to expand. And the chart on the right shows just the different RFIs that come through. Almost half are advanced manufacturing, automotive and food sciences, and agricultural make up almost the rest of them. So this is what we're going after, and we've targeted. Again, we just have no place to put them. Our comprehensive plan that we just, the planning commission just adopted, it's the area. Of course, you can see on the left, it's the northwest area of Troy. The purplish color is industrial, what we expect to be developed there, which is in line with what we are looking for. And again, it talks about having an improved investment on the West and Experiment Farm Road and the Northwest City Corporation Limits. So that was adopted this year by Planning Commission, and it was vetted through a group of stakeholders who kind of mapped out the future land use of the community. And the comprehensive plan, of course, identified areas to grow. And this is that, this is the parcels in the northwest area that are out. Essentially, those 16 parcels that you see there, approximately 966 acres of land are used for that. With that, it's our most likely area to grow industrial. We have water and sewer are close to that area. And in a little bit, the assistant city engineer will be talking about some improvements we need to make to make that a reality. But these sites are very important. They're actually, could be sought after because they're so close to Interstate 75. They're within a mile of that interstate, and there's a lot of RFIs we receive they want within a mile of the 4 lane interstate. So it'd be nice to have. And if you have any questions, certainly speak out.
Tim, let's, you have a quick question.
Yep.
I just want to verify, we are, these will be on the website tomorrow, right? So we don't have to, these slides.
Presentation, yeah. We uploaded, and then of course, you'll have the video on the website as well.
Okay, so we'll have these slides available?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Tim, Lot 16 there, is that just south of the fairgrounds? Am I looking at that?
That is south of the hospital.
Hospital, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
That's Montpel that you just, to the district.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then going more into the comp plan, just some of the goals I wanted to point out. It talks about supporting job creation and business expansion. It talks about the northwest growth area that we're concerned with here today. It talks about taking the current 12-inch water main, it was 16-inch. And then it talks about increasing the sewer line from a 15-inch line to a 24-inch line. So again, it's, the strategy is making a modeling of utility investments that would make these sites shovel-ready sites available for development.
Tim?
Yes.
On the one line you said that the, on West Main Street, we have a sewer line that's 15 inches may have to be upgraded to 24. Are we going to repaint West Main Street in that area? I mean, we're talking about west of the interview, right?
Yeah, this would be, I mean.
We're in the process of getting that repaid this year or next year?
Be this year, it'll be this, next year, right?
Jeff, I think you're getting into the engineering part of it.
Yeah, it's going to be coming up and talking about the utility improvements.
It might be, I remember by the time we get to that part.
If you wait, it's going to be too slow.
Are these lines, the lines run in the streets, right, essentially what they are?
Yeah, they would be run through. So just to summarize, lack of available sites that we have. We talked about missed opportunities. We could only apply for 5% of the RFIs that come our way from the state because we don't have enough land. RFIs reviewed and submitted, again, we lack the land to supply these and give those up. And then lack of shovel-ready sites, improvements that Chrissy will be talking about will be needed to make the investment. So with that, I'll turn it over to our assistant city engineer, Chrissy Butera, to talk about needed investments.
Or the engineer, or Jill.
Or Jill, sorry. Sorry for a loop.
All right, so to kind of continue to build off what Tim was talking about, and now.
Don't be scared, I'm just kidding.
Now Bill really is leaving. No, sorry. To build off of that, what we did as we were building the comp plan, we began a targeted master plan talking about the industrial investment in the northwest area and the 1,000 acres. And so we reached out and we sent, we put out an RFP from engineering standpoint to find, we engaged with Arcadis to perform our targeted master plan. Originally, when we talked about the, to try and make these sites shovel-ready. So what would it take? We kind of had to determine what we have capacity-wise, what we need capacity-wise to make this industrial area, this 1,000 acres shovel-ready. So we originally went out in the RFP when we, before we had chosen Arcadis and kind of talked about, do we need 5 million gallons of water? You know, do we need 2 million? What do we need? So we actually started looking at all the RFIs that we were or were not replying to because whether we had the water, the infrastructure or not. And we came to, in conjunction with Arcadis, talking about what their experience is around development in Ohio. And we came to 2 million gallons water usage and 1 million of peak sanitary flow. And so that's what we did in 2024. We completed that master plan. I'll go into a little bit more detail of that. And then after that, knowing that we were doing that targeted master plan, we had already had planned the 2025 community-wide water master plan. Our last master plan was in 2014, shortly after I got here. And so we typically do a master plan kind of every 10 years for the water and for the sewer. And so we were going to do the 2025, in 2025, do the water master plan, 2026 do the sanitary master plan. And so as we talk about this development, this 1,000 acres, and how do we make it shovel-ready, and do we provide utilities to it? Because that's kind of what we're coming to council, asking, and asking your guys' input. Regardless of what that decision is, the community-wide master plans need to be done, and we are proceeding forward with those. And then just to be note, just something to be noteworthy, the recent Water Main and Boyle Advisory, Water Main, Break and Boyle Advisory, we have been investing in our system from the 2014 master plan. We invested, 2013, 14, we invested over $5 million replacing and making loops in our water system interior to the city. And then ever since then, annually, we've spent an average of $1.5 million on water line replacement, increasing their size, you know, anything that had, looking at it from an asset management standpoint. So the Arcadis study that we did and finalized in mid, middle of 2024, identified certain areas, like I said, we talked about that purple area being the northwest area, the roughly 1,000 acres of developable land from an industrial standpoint. And so Arcadis kind of looked at different options. They took our water model into account, and they kind of said, okay, if you add this pipe, like you can see, W1 is out and around the city. You know, that could maybe be a feasible option. And they talked about kind of going through the city and increasing water line sizes. There's positives and negatives to both, right? And so here, this slide isn't necessary to say for council to choose, hey, we want this exact route, but we do want some feedback. You know, would you like, would we like to increase what's in the city? There's positives to that, positive being, you know, increasing our water line size, then it's usable for everybody. And we're also utilizing some existing line capacity that we already have. Or do we want it outside the city, less likely to be developable land? But, and then also, so there's price tags on that between 35 and 50 million dollars. And that, just to note, that does not include whatever would be needed on site of the development. And then we did the same thing on the sewer side. So those are a little bit less, but we looked at what are constraints and what are limiting factors on the sewer side. So you kind of have to look closely, but there's a red line, a yellow line. It's probably easiest to see, and then there's a blue line kind of up there off of Trade Square West up in the upper part of that picture. What is not shown on here is any private development investment. Again, there were some assumptions made. These are very high-end estimates just for planning purposes to kind of get us started, right, to kind of get us in that ballpark. And then we can figure out, then we can get into that detailed discussion. So yeah, you can look at those. So really, what, after, I'm, we are expecting questions, but really kind of what our next steps are from a staff standpoint is a community-wide master plan of water and sewer. But then also, we need to determine, you know, we no doubt will be doing system improvements continually that are internal to the city. But the question is, are we also to include detailed design for water master, for what we've kind of talked about here today, for the larger picture, to get to the industrial site? And then obviously, with those price tags that I just threw out at you, that we have to figure out kind of how, what's that financial impact? So with that, short and sweet, hit you with a whole bunch of numbers. But these are some questions that we're looking for feedback from council to provide us direction. You know, does city council want us to continue to grow our boundaries? Should the city continue to grow its industrial base? Are you supportive of an aggressive utility and expansion, extension plan? So, and what timeframe? You know, when you start talking about timeframes, are we talking about three to five years? Are we talking about five to 10 years? Are we talking about 10 to 20 years? And then are you supportive of impact to utility rates? No doubt, you know, we probably can't do, most certainly, we cannot do $35 million worth of infrastructure improvements on the water side and have no utility impacts. And then, and then lastly, whatever questions, I know we probably haven't hit a lot. We've kept it pretty high-end, but whatever questions or comments you have. And with that.
So just to kind of summarize, because we do have some folks in the audience that you might want to hear from as well. Thank you, Jill and Tim.
Joey Graves from Troy Development Council, who we work very closely with on when we explore these opportunities, when we talk to our current businesses and they talk about expansion plans, when we evaluate the different RFIs. I think what's important to know is that particularly with projects like Intel and some of the bigger projects, even though they're in central Ohio, they are radiating out as far as the Dayton and southwest Ohio area. We're seeing requests, more and more requests for more and more land. Whereas, you know, we might have been asked about projects in the maybe 50 to 100-acre range. They are substantial, more and more of these requests are much, much bigger chunks of land. And, you know, I don't think it can be overemphasized that the fact of the matter is, is that our utilities, you know, we've got, we've got the capacity, but to get them where they need to be, in other words, make these properties and adjacent to those properties shovel-ready, which is the, kind of the economic development buzzwords, is not, is not a cheap, nor is it a very quick process. And so when we talk about where we want to go as a community, the reason that we wanted to meet with you tonight was, and now, is so that we can stay ahead as much as possible and be planning for that big picture. The industrial park targeted master plan was just the first step. Knowing that we had our community-wide water plan coming up, and as recently as, what, a month ago, being really unable to submit an eligible piece of land for a project. We're not sure about how many jobs they would be, but we know they're high-paying jobs. And the requirements, the minimum requirement was to be able to supply that project 1.3 million gallons of water a day. Data processing is a big, a big prospect that's various companies have been trolling the area. The, it's our understanding, for example, our neighbor to the north, the 330 acres that they annexed recently is to support some type of data processing project. That's great. That's great for the county. It does have a high water use. The sewer use, our capacity on the sewer side, of course, we expanded the plant late last year, so we do have some extra capacity. Not nearly as much as we have with the water. But the good news is, is that especially with the data processing, the sewer treatment needs are much less than the water supply needs are. But to get it from the plant to those areas, it's not just expanding lines. It's not just maybe adding lines and circling lines. It's also pump stations, lift stations. There's a water tank that would be anticipated at some point to support that kind of acreage that far north. And so all of those, those come into play. The comprehensive water plan that we need, we will be bringing to you in the next six to eight weeks for authorization to award to a consultant like Arcadis that, you know, will look at the overall community needs, but that's just the water side. Those are very big projects, and so trying to do both water and sewer at the same time, we just don't, I'm not even going to say it, Christie. I, yeah, no, I will, just because we don't have the bandwidth. That's the last time you'll hear me say it. Internally and externally, and there's a lot that goes into a data collection and support from the staff to the consultants, having all the GIS, having all of the statistics that they need to really do the appropriate modeling just throughout the community. do the appropriate modeling, um, just throughout the community, let alone this targeted area, is a fairly, um, uh, big project. And then, of course, then we need to deal, do the sewer side. But as we look at the water side, we can also be in a position, at least, uh, ask you to be in a position where, once we get the preliminary data from the community-wide water plan, to be able to then also perhaps start looking at some more detailed designs based on those results, uh, that can target and start extending to, um, uh, to the industrial north area. We didn't want, we don't want to blindside you with any, any time, but certainly on something like this that will have some far-reaching impacts, both financially, uh, staff resources, um, as where, as, as well as timing-wise, uh, that's why we wanted to meet with you, uh, with you today. Um, we do have, uh, I see, uh, Representative of Brunz Realities here, uh, as I mentioned, President and CEO Guru, whatever he calls himself, Joey Graves from TDC is here, um, and, uh, you might want to hear their perspective and why, uh, and why they're, uh, you know, why they support, why, what we're, what we're looking at and why we're asking you all these tough questions, uh, right now.
Patrick, before they come up, can you go a little bit, a little bit more into like our discussion yesterday of the domino effect, even though we have lots of land, of the domino effect, if we had land, with the different companies moving and moving, and your definition of aggressive that you presented yesterday?
Domino effect, I remember using that word, that's why I'm stuck on bandwidth.
You talk about this company wants land, so we don't have land for them to expand, and if they would expand, they could just, just send it here.
Sure, so, you know, it's, it's, uh, as, as Tim mentioned earlier, you know, it's true of any community and any, uh, any kind of economic development growth that probably 70 to 80% of that growth occurs organically from, uh, existing businesses. As we, as those businesses grow, they need more and more land, they need more and more space. So, you know, if we have community, uh, we have companies here in Troy, and we have a company that expands into a bigger space, they build a new facility in a much bigger piece of land, they're, they're typically going to abandon the facility, the building that they're in, that's, that would be smaller. Uh, so another project, and, and we do have an example of this where there's a lot of dom, there's the dominos, I, I get your point now, um, where, you know, we have another smaller company that wants to expand into the space that was, that would be abandoned by the company doing the larger project and so on and so on. Um, and I think we've got a, um, a three-fold, um, domino effect that could occur, uh, if we had enough space to do this. Uh, when we talk about aggressive, so thank you, Mr. Rozell, I appreciate you calling that out. Um, you know, the aggressive, um, aggressiveness or the word aggressive, just so you know, aggressive is not a three to six-month window. Um, probably a realistic timeframe, you know, if we were able to flip the switch today, um, you're still probably talking about a three-year timeframe at a minimum, uh, but at least we can be in a position to start, uh, setting our expectations and getting ready for those projects so that we can get competitive and start working with companies, um, in, within that timeframe. Uh, we do, uh, need to look at the impact on our utility, uh, fund balances, if this is the direction that the council wants to go, and that, that'll also take time. Um, and so, um, you know, the direction that we get today, we're not asking for any kind of recommendation for legislative action next, uh, next week or in a week and a half, uh, but we are looking for some kind of a direction from the council or some kind of consensus so that we can continue to move forward. And, um, we set reasonable expectations from you, for you, by you, so that we know which direction to go in.
Patrick, I have a question. Would you, the very, the very first question, city continued to grow its boundaries, you're looking through that through transactional, uh, processes, right? Not through eminent domain or anything in that process?
We had not contemplated that, nor did we, uh, uh, com, um, contemplate, um, you know, being aggressive in that way. Uh, but if we're going to, uh, be able to offer, uh, industrial sites, they're going to be outside of town and be, uh, willing to annex into town to get our utilities? Uh, but no, there, I mean, you know, we do type-two expedited annexations and those are all voluntary.
Patrick, put down that one. Of the, of the thousand acres that we have targeted, are there any of those acres currently available for sale?
I missed, uh, Tim, if you want to, oh, that guy. Uh, I don't know if available for sale is, is quite the, uh, probably the proper phrase, but, uh, there are, we do know that there are prospects that have been looking at that whole area. Uh, so there are business prospects, development companies, uh,
Do you want me to address that?
Land hunters, if you will. Um, this is Ben Reddick from Brunz Realty.
I don't need to give my address or anything, do I?
Yeah.
Uh, so to answer your question, I'm, there, there's discussions, ongoing discussions with some property owners on their land. Um, I can share, right now, there are a couple of groups that are interested in purchasing large quantities of land on the north side. Um, you know, it's a long process, Patrick talked about, you know, even the infrastructure project would be, you know, probably three years, uh, to be realistic. Um, you know, if you phased it, you might get early phases in, on the front end of that. Even if, um, you know, discussions go well with property owners, let's say, and, um, we can get some, some land contracted with industrial developers, you're still looking at a, even for the sale to close, you're probably looking at a couple of years. Uh, the due diligence period is pretty lengthy. They're going to look for commitments at least from the city for projects like this before they, um, execute anything. Um, so, you know, which is okay, because I think it, you know, it allows us to be able to work with property owners and come up with a, a, you know, um, terms that are advantageous to the property owners, both from a price perspective and a tax obligation perspective, this is kind of the way we want to operate on that north end of town, you know, given the, the situation.
And one other thing to note is that This is not meant to be any kind of scare tactic, but it is a reality. You know, we're looking at, um, as we grow, back to your annexation question, growing north, if we don't continue to grow north and we're content with our boundaries and our population size and our industry base, uh, i.e. tax base, um, then, you know, we fully expect that there will be, uh, further expansion from the north to the south towards us, uh, without naming names or, uh, particular communities. Uh, so that is something to consider as well, uh, if in fact that we want to continue to see some deliberate growth, uh, in employment, in industrial base, income tax base, and of course, geographic boundaries.
We can only grow north.
Todd, can you come up, you come up on the microphone, because recording is not going to pick you up for those viewing.
Todd, Councilmember, i- if we're going to grow north, we would need, we have to be contiguous for them to annex in, right? So if, if the parties who own where we are now aren't willing to give us an option or sell, you couldn't do it on an option, right? We would actually have to physically have beaded property for it to be, for the property beyond that to be annexed.
Well, I mean, the current property owner could annex and, you know, we've had projects that have, uh, come to us and, and, you know, annexation had been a contingent condition prior to the closing, so at that point it would be a purchase contract or, uh, you know, I don't know if it would be technically an option, but there'd, there'd be an agreement if come annexation, then they would execute.
Yeah, I guess, but my point was, it's sort of like playing the old game Stratego, right? If, if this, if the north city's going to come to the south and they're willing to sell, but we want to go northwards and we're stuck at this abyss because we can't get contiguous land, I guess that, that's my, that goes to my first question. We're, we're not looking at eminent domain, but what's our, what's our step if we can't get past certain landowners that won't give us that option to purchase?
Well, I, you know, eminent domain is, is not really a tool that you can use very much for economic development.
Right.
Um, and it's not one that we, just for the record, had been, had contemplated at all. Um, there are a variety, uh, there, there are several points, um, of extensions that we could explore. Uh, all of the acreages not owned by one property owner, uh, and we do have, um, terminal points for water and sewer at various, you know, on very, on various properties, uh, within our corporate limits. So it's not just concentrated in, okay, we have to expand and we have to expand on this road and this road only. So that's something that as we go through the comprehensive water and sewer plans, you know, we'll be able to identify those various alternative plans as well.
Uh, yeah, I don't think anyone's going to be concerned about putting in infrastructure. I understand the cost and everything else, but I guess the issue is, should we continue to grow boundaries? Should be, can we continue to grow our boundaries? That's more the question that I am posing.
Well, sure, but the, the first question to a- answer is should, as a policy decision, then can becomes a detailed, uh, question. Uh, we feel very confident that there are ways that we can, uh, expand, um, but the policy question, uh, and direction that we're looking for you is the should part, because it is not an, you know, inconsequential number, and it is a, there is a significant amount of future planning, uh, and, you know, strategic planning that we need to be doing, uh, and so we need your direction for that.
Clarification on that we don't have land, it's not just shovel-ready land, it's land in general.
Within our corporate boundaries, I mean, you saw, we've got 122 acres On the north side, um, several parcels of which are very small-sized. Um, one would be a total of 105 acres, uh, that would be a, relatively attractive to a future project. On the south side, we're even much more limited than that.
So of those that are wanting to expand, are they wanting to expand with more land than we have at those sites currently?
That's possible. I mean, I don't want to say too much about that, just because there's a lot of moving hearts in that.
In my mind, if you're trying to grow our current base who's been loyal to us and been here and they want to expand within the city of Troy, then we should be somewhat of a plan focused on what's the direction that they might be going, not that they have to or whatever, but if they're requesting 500 acres of land, then obviously.
Uh, they're not requesting that size.
Yeah, but
And we are keeping them in mind in our short-term contingency planning, um, you know, trying to be even more aggressive with them than this, but this is just thinking beyond
Beyond our current
Yeah, those current projects.
And I guess the other question I have is, what would aggressive utility extension really be?
Well, that would be the three, the three-year window, once we, you know, we, we have a better idea of our, starting with our water comprehensive, uh, you know, community-wide strategic plan, how that better informs the industrial park or the targeted area water plan, you know, and, and how does that refine the recommendations, the alternatives that were made, uh, kind of in a bubble, if you will, uh, but also then looking at the other community improvements that hopefully would make this much more efficient and keep the costs relatively controlled. Um, but all that, as far as aggressive goes, again, we're, we're probably thinking a three-year window.
Three-year.
Mr. Schilling, I, I'm, I'm going to act in Bill's stead here, because I can see the audience and you have something, so if you'd just come up to the mic as the pro-Tim here.
Bill, so, Bill, so appreciate it. Um, yeah, a couple of questions. I mean, as we look at the original map, and just using the example where that red line has sort of swept up around this way, and then the question is, is that we don't have water lines there now, and so do we need a, um, yeah, okay, the one on the right there sweeps up and around, I'm not even sure where all that is, but anyway, essentially, I mean, we're talking about gaining easement to all that area.
That would be a
And would, would be beneficial if the city had a, a fund or something that they could say, okay, as we, I mean, would, could council essentially allocate some assets or funds for, for an easement project like that going forward? And then the second thing I know is that when, um, several years ago, we bought the land along, some land along Experiment Farm Road, which I think we basically sold most of it.
The industrial park, that's sold.
Yes, everything's sold. So I mean, so the same thing, I mean, could council essentially say, you know, if we need to buy land, we can, let's do it. I mean, let's, I mean, can we set up some contingency so that this type of thing is, if, if, if land comes avail and, and then, you know, I know, I know we're, we're focusing on the north, but we have six miles between here and Covington. It's, you know, it's all bare land and, I mean, it's, it's all farmerland, and we also can go east, uh, if we can get, get out to 202, I know there's a flood plain there on the other side of the golf course, but, you know, I mean, something, I mean, we'd be conceivable that we could also, maybe that's not the most ideal place, but I mean, if, if somebody was looking for a large piece of land, I mean, could we go east or west instead of north? I mean, that's, if, if something happens in, in this area, we can't, for whatever reason, we can't get it all together and say, okay, we've got this large section of land, but we've got, somebody saying east of Washington or west of Washington Road, hey, you know, I've got 400 acres, I'd, I'd be happy to get rid of it and
Okay, so let me unpack this, because I think you had a couple of, uh, I won't say random, but, um, kind of, kind of connected, uh, thoughts there. Number one, um, we really don't want to be in the business of owning land, nor do we think if we could make properties or get, get close to properties with shovel readiness, if you will, that we would have to own land, number one. Number two, um, I don't know, um, that another deal like the industrial park, uh, the, you know, South Appella, uh, and the price that we paid per acre, that we would ever be able to get that kind of discount again. That project worked because of that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was five, six years ago now.
Right.
Um, and so, uh, very, very, very unlikely. Uh, as far as some of the alternative locations that you're mentioning, uh, it, you know, keep in mind, uh, or recall that Tim brought up the land use plan that was approved in the, um, the comprehensive plan update and where we identify future industrial growth. Uh, the areas that you talk about have their own challenges, they may not and probably are not compatible to what's out there now and the, uh, the expansion plans, you know, whether, whether the target, the areas that you're talking about are, are identified as future residential or mixed use or commercial, you know, we're, we're focused on where we know. we're, we're focused on where we know the industrial, the purple part is, um, and, uh, and, you know, where we already.
Where we already have industrial, um, activity and zoning.
Right, but I'm, what I'm saying is the example you used, again, you know, west of Washington Road. You know, I mean, right now, that's, that's essentially nothing but uncommitted land. I mean, it's farmland right now, it's all agricultural. And so, you know, if it's contiguous with the, with our current boundaries, then if somebody wants to use that as an industrial space and the, and the land is available there, I, I'm not sure why, I mean, I guess my question, I don't know why we're limiting ourselves as far as our, our growth is concerned. I mean, we can, uh, we have a, we can't, we can't go south because we're already buttoned up against Tiff City. Uh, sometime in the near future, we're going to meet Pickwa. And, um, but again, the east-west is, you know, is, those two areas are essentially, uh, unclaimed. And I'm, so I'm thinking, you know, you know, why don't we, I mean, if we're looking to expand, when we're looking for projects to have a large land need, then I don't think we need, I mean, so, okay, so what if we, we do fill in that purple spot, then what do we do? You know, can we, I mean, so we've got to be thinking, I think, outside the box, say, okay, we do have the option to go east or west. If, if it.
And that is, and that is partly why we do the 10-year. Community-wide master planning, which again, we want to start in the next couple of months by bringing you a, um, you know, a request for authorization for a, uh, a consultant, an engineering firm to start doing that. That will analyze not just the, the north side, but, you know, our current boundaries and, you know, what our future growth needs might be based on the comprehensive plan, um, mapping that we've done and the identification of the different uses. And, you know, in the ma, in the master plan, uh, or in the, uh, comprehensive plan, the land use plan, uh, you know, it's not always black and white, that this area is definitely industrial, this area is going to be residential. There are, you know, comparable and compatible uses, you know, that, that may overlap. Uh, you might recall that in the former comprehensive plan, you know, we had bubbles and then those bubbles overlapped, uh, from time to time. Uh, we tried to get a, we tried to be a little cleaner on this version of the comprehensive plan, but there is some flexibility there. Uh, but in terms of where, uh, folks are looking, uh, where we are already positioned to have some of the infrastructure, uh, in place, um, both utility infrastructure as well as, you know, road infrastructure and the, uh, highway interchange, for example. Uh, that's why the north, uh, Experiment Farm area is, is a key area.
You're not saying that eventually, it doesn't mean that we're not wanting to go west or can't go west. It's just at this moment, this is what's the targeted area for growth.
This is the one that makes the most sense. I mean, we've already had the momentum there. Um, we do have, uh, quite a bit of concentration of the industrial, of industrial land and activity and companies. And so, you know, certainly want to build on that.
Uh, Joseph Graves, CEO of Troy City Council. One thing, Joe, I was going to talk to about why this area is so special, one being.
One being there's a substation there. And it's a, a substation that can be enlarged several times over.
An electric substation.
Electric substation, electric substation. So that's why this area is attractive to a lot of projects because the power is already there. And power costs a lot of money. And there's no substation within reasonable distance in 41 or 55. Um, so that's why this area is being looked at for industrial growth. An, an additional reason why this area is looking, being looked at.
Sonia Pierce, Troy City Council. Uh, along that pipeline there, is there opportunity for growth, uh, industrial growth around the pipeline, the loop itself?
Which pipeline?
The brave one. Like, once we put it in.
Tim, you want to talk about that?
Yeah. Yeah, several things come into play. One is what's around it. Two, some of the area could be developed, where it's going to be. Of course, when you're doing planning, you want to look at where your industrial goes and then what's around it. So you don't want to put industrial right next to residential because you have major concerns with, uh, overlapping, uh, land uses and conflict there. So we try to avoid that by doing buffer areas. So it's, it's hard to say, yeah, just go around the W-1 line and, and develop that out because of what's already there. Some already have status neighborhoods that you have to, uh, be cognizant of and make sure that you're not affecting their property or negatively affecting that. So it's hard to just look at the map and do that. And I think the other point we're trying to make is there could be, the comp plan is something that gets reviewed every five years. And so we're predicting, hey, this is a growth that's going to occur short-term and we know it's a hot area, uh, as Joey talked about, because of the utilities that are around there. Um, it's not to say we couldn't grow in the future, maybe in 15 or 20 years. We're looking at different areas. Uh, that could happen with a comp plan. You just have to update it and make sure you have the master planning. And so that's exactly what we're trying to do. We know this area is a targeted area. Ben Reddick talked about how, uh, there's hits on this area. Uh, we know there's interest in the area. It's right next to 75, which is a very key component anytime you have an RFI with the state. So it makes the most sense to develop this area here. Uh, and then you can look at the other areas, maybe going west or, or east at a different time in the future.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I was also listening to you guys on, on my drive and you might have, um, mentioned this, but I don't recall. What kind of, is there a different timeline if we go that route versus going through the city? And updating the type and give us a.
There's not necessarily a different time route or a timeframe or anything like that. Um, it's more probably just taking into consideration what are other construction projects going on? Uh, you know, we've kind of talked about West Main Street and construction fatigue, right? There's definitely benefits. There's benefits of increasing, uh, the size and being able to use the redundancy and the increased size with all the other network of the water system or the sewer system inside the city. Um, but it will affect residents more, right? We'll be, we potentially will be in their front, in front and maybe digging a, you know, 10, 15-foot deep trench. So, um, yeah, but it, not a different timeframe, no. Design and everything kind of takes the same time regardless of whether you're going, you know, outside or inside.
And you probably answered this question.
Okay.
If we go inside and develop inside instead of around like that.
Mm-hmm.
How old are those systems that were replaced?
Well, I mean, time goes fast, I feel like. So if we say, for example, like I'm looking at like the Westbrook area, like the Westbrook area was built in 1950s, you know? So if you say that pipe's probably right now 70, 75 years old, essentially. Um, as you get closer to downtown, you get older, uh, but it doesn't, kind of after you get what, east of Westbrook, it's kind of, you know, maybe not necessarily in a, in a neighborhood, in a community, but as you go along Staunton Riverside, if you talk about Staunton and Riverside, well, the school and all of, I don't know how old that area is, but I would say it's probably pretty old. How old's the, you know, junior high and the high schools? Junior high's probably the least, but I think the high school's pretty old. So, um, 61, okay. So, yeah, so then, but then as you get west of the interstate, you know, you're talking about newer. I mean, um, people have talked about 1970s and nothing was west of the interstate. So you say 50 years or less. Um, and you wouldn't necessarily, it kind of looks like we'd be replacing that line and putting a different line. Typically, what we do do is that you kind of run a, a parallel line, right? Or you kind of determine, like, that would all be figured out during design. Is, is your street, is your area large enough that you can run a parallel line? Or is there too many other utilities in that ground that you pretty much have to get rid of this line and we got to replace it with a larger line? Okay, thank you.
Now, is this land that we're looking developing, is it going to be dedicated to industry that produces significant job growth?
Well, any project, any project that we look at, we take that into consideration. Um, and I, I guess. Gently correct some of your language, um, you know, we, we don't intend on developing this, this property. You know, this is still private property. Uh, what we are, uh, asking the council for direction on is do we extend the utilities to make it more attractive for future development? And as it's developed and they want to use our, our utilities, then they annex into, to the community and that's where the economic development impact comes in, in the form of jobs as well as, um, revenues.
Now, I heard you touch on this before, didn't go into, didn't go into much funding mechanisms. Are we, what, how will we fund the project?
Well, that's, that's something that then we have to crunch. We have to, have to look at the financial impacts. Um, and, you know, as we get better data, uh, through the, uh, updated, uh, information, um, as part of the recommendations on the community-wide strategic, uh, strategic plans, uh, that'll help us, you know, decide, uh, what kind of impact is there on the rate structure? What kind of, uh, bond financing capacity would we have within the current, uh, you know, rate structure? What kind of, uh, five and 10-year impact would there be on the business plan, the, the pro forma? Uh, and as it relates to our fund balance, all those, all, all that financial analysis would still have to be done.
One last question. The route that you have right there, is it already within? Already within the city of Troy or would we be expanding to just run the route?
Uh, you said right there, you're talking about the red line?
Yep.
Uh, no, that's, uh, that is, that would be outside.
And L D.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what's shown right there, Detroit, Indy and L D. So there's outside.
Inside and outside, both, yeah. So when you talk about timing, you know, there, there are benefits to, uh, to going straight through town since it's already in town. However, you're, you're dealing with density and, uh, you know, current infrastructure needs that make that part challenging. You know, when you're going, uh, the red line, um, you know, it's, it's more green space. It's more easily to, you know, easy to construct on. However, you would be, uh, having to address right-of-way easements, you know, acquisitions, whatever it would take to actually put the utilities in. So, you know, there, there, there would be issues in anything and, uh, you know. We are getting in the weeds, which is a good thing, um, just so you can understand what your direction means to us. But that's the, really the next step and we haven't even begun to explore those and didn't want to. If you were to come back and say, whoa, we don't want to do anything, we're fine the way we are.
All right, all right. Todd mentioned wherever he's at, wherever he's at.
Right behind you.
He mentioned something about annexation and you replied back that we do, um, not rapid expedited.
Type two, expedited.
Yeah, expedited, thank you. Uh, but if we follow that red line, it's outside the city right now, that would essentially become a city property or would that be annexed wherever that red piping goes or buried?
Well, there's state law, there are state law restrictions that, uh, that come with any kind of annexation. And, and this, again, this goes, this goes. Predatory versus voluntary annexation. We, we're not looking at predatory. Uh, so, you know, we've got lines that go outside of, of town. Uh, we have a project that we're starting in partnership with the county right now and some of, you know, the first mile of that line, uh, will be outside of town. Uh, that property's not going to be annexed. It's when they want to tap into it and they become adjacent to the property that we start to deliberately look at, uh, annexation. This would really be no different.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Titterington, um, I'm trying to think about some of the questions that may get asked by citizens at large that may, may come up. And when thinking about some of the questions that were proposed and asked of us on the screen before, um, I could just see some of the questions that were coming. One, should Troy expand its industrial growth? I think if most citizens would just blindly, blindly ask that question, they'd be, yeah, that's, that's a good thing. We should expand our, uh, industrial base. Uh, but then the next question would be, if you go back up to the top, should the city, should it grow its boundaries? You know, you might see more questions or pushback on that. You talk about, and I, I don't want you to ask, well, it's hypothetical. If we don't do this, what may or may not happen if we decide not to go this route?
Um, well, I mean, there's an old adage that if you're not growing, then you're, you're dying. Um, that's a little extreme and I didn't make that up, uh, but you're certainly not moving ahead. And if you're, and if you're growing, if you're not growing, then you're depending on the same, you know, you're, you're placing the bet that nothing is ever going to change with your current, your current base. That your current housing stock is, is going, you know, as it ages, is still going to age well and it's still going to be fully occupied, that it's not going to turn from homeownership or, uh, personal ownership to, uh, to rental, uh, stock. Uh, that your industrial businesses are going to continue to thrive, which, you know, we, we certainly hope and we've been blessed to have, uh, continued, uh, stability and growth. But we do have those businesses that come and go. Uh, if you're not growing and providing opportunities for expansion, then the possibility of that, uh, stability or, uh, that those businesses becoming less stable and less able to, to stay and thrive in the community, they, they become, they become greater. Uh, and then of course, you know, all of that impacts employment opportunities for our residents in the, in our region as well as, um, our, uh, income tax and other revenues, both direct and indirect, that, uh, lead to the quality of life. And the economic development, as Tim mentioned right at the beginning, you know, that's our, that's been your number one priority years in the mayor's, uh, for at, at least 20 years. And the reason economic development is first, even though a lot of people scratch their head and say, well, why wouldn't police and fire and safety be first? Well, it's, it's a close second. It might be a 1A and a 1B, but if you don't have the economic development, you don't have the revenue stream. If you don't have the revenue stream, then you can't pay these, uh, guys and gals. And it's very likely that they're not going to be volunteer firefighters and, and police officers. And so that's why economic development and continued, uh, expansion, you know, deliberate or aggressive, just consistent expansion like we've had over the last 20 years or longer is so important.
Um, and then I, I don't mean, don't mean to be humorous, but I, just to summarize it a little bit, while, while there's no immediate plans for that area with the infrastructure that's already in place, Mr. Graves, uh, mentioned with the electrical or the transmission lines there, um, and putting a water or building the water out there, you could summarize it, again, I don't mean to be humorous, but if you build it, they will come.
Um, what's been true is, you know, i- if it's there, it's much more attractive and the likelihood that they would build on it is much greater.
Okay.
It's, it's not really a field of dreams, but I guess in a way you could consider it that.
Okay.
Well, I, I think what maybe you missed in Mr. Reddick's comments that there are conversations that are occurring right now.
Mm-hmm.
For that future.
Yep.
So there are assumptions to be drawn from that, but there are things that we're not being able to be told from the private sector.
Yep, thank you.
And if I might ask, Mr. Friggy, do you, from your position, anything on numbers and, and anything that we've discussed that maybe you have some insight at the moment that you might want to share or is it even time to talk about that, talk about that sort of thing?
Yeah, well, when we find out, when we find a way to finance this, if that's the way you, the direction you take, that's a conversation down the road.
Joey, I know when Pella came, people were concerned there wouldn't be enough work, workforce members. workforce members. Can you address that? That we have the, we have the workforce in this area to draw if we continue to grow the industry? Because I know that was a concern when we originally spoke on the Pella.
Uh, we have, Tim and I, Tim Davis and I have been, uh, under the last three years since the arrival of Pella. We have been specifically concentrating on growing what we have, working with our existing industry, growing our existing base. And we're always looking at opportunities that may offer jobs with a different skillset than what we currently have, uh, assembly, manufacturing. Uh, there are other opportunities out there, like Patrick talked about, data centers. There are 40 to 50 jobs per building, but they pay well. So those 30 to, 40 to 50 jobs are equivalent to two or three jobs that are, you know, average wage currently in the city. So, I don't think we're looking at competing. I'm not saying it wouldn't happen, but, um, I think we just, we just need to concentrate more on diversifying our workforce base. And, uh, again, it's, a healthy economy is 80% working with their existing, and that 20% bringing in new. Uh, right now, Tim and I have, uh, in 2025, we have about 250 jobs that we're going to be able to announce wholly in the short term. Uh, so, we're working that. Uh, we continue to have subdivisions under construction. We want to attract more people to the community. We want to attract those skills into our community, but we need to, uh, keep that in mind as we, as we grow. But we're going to be focused on diversifying our workforce, on our, on our base, industrial base.
Thanks.
And just to, to expand a little bit on what Joe, uh, Joseph said, um, you know, when he, when we're talking about data centers, for example, and 40 to 50 jobs per building on any, uh, piece of land, they're asking for a lot of land because they put multiple buildings on. That's just the way the, their business model works. So they're, they're building, they would be building multiple buildings. So you're talking 40 to 50 times four or five buildings on a particular parcel, and again, those are fairly high-paying jobs. You know, this is, tonight's, uh, presentation and discussion is about the utilities related to, uh, business expansion and employment opportunities. But that's not to say that we're ignoring the other aspects of, you know, attracting employees to move into town. We do have a strategy, and we've been working on the strategy, of providing more diversified housing opportunities in Troy. We've had those discussions before. We continue, we'll continue to have those as well. Uh, and then, of course, uh, you know, our investments, our continued investments in not only the downtown, but all of our quality-of-life amenities is another aspect to attract, attract, uh, new residents into, into the community, or at least the county, uh, to support those, those jobs.
Are you having other input from citizens or visitor?
It's not my meeting, it's yours, sir.
Anybody else wanted to address anything we covered? President? Attendees? I do have one question. Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak for a second. My, my question is, can someone answer? It was my understanding we have a water line that goes up 25A to the hospital. We also had, and just in recent years, extended the line out Experiment Farm Road to do a loop to the hospital. So there's water on the northern end of your industrial park now. Why, why isn't that line sufficient enough to handle some of this growth?
Uh, there are various, uh, reasons for that. I mean, I can give you the overview, or Jill can give you the engineering expertise, because I can only fake it so much.
Um, so, the, those lines that are out there, you are correct, Ted, that they can handle some of the growth. They do not provide redundancy, right? But they can handle, depending on where it's at, they can handle between a half million to up to a million, uh, growth, but we don't have sanitary there. So, they can, it can handle, and we would look at that.
We looked into that further. Before, we just said, even if you guys gave us direction today and said, yeah, you know, we want to go, like, let's move in this direction generally, we're going to be looking at that. Again, this was just a planning, high-level document to kind of get some numbers out there, but, um, but we also, because this purple area is kind of just this box that we're saying, uh, Mr. Whitten's term, you know, saying, if we plan it, you know, if we, if we build it, they will come, um, we can only make so many assumptions, right? So, uh, we would look at definitely making sure that, you know, we get the 2 million to the site, and, and what can we use, you know, and what does it save us? Like, if it doesn't necessarily save us anything, and we're pinching, we're getting a quarter of a million down here, and a quarter of a million down here, you know, we'll be looking at all of that in, in a detailed design.
Anyone else?
One of the things that I want, I want you to not do is get in an ego battle with Pickla, okay? It doesn't matter. One of the worst thing you could do is spend $50 million, put water there, and they decide, eh, we like Pickla better than Troy. What have you, how are you going to get that 50 million back? It's not going to be income taxes to Troy, it's going to be through Pickla. So you've got to be very careful what you ask for, okay? And a 50 million, I understand, you know, Mr. Bunny may come back with it or something, but fundamentally, you're going to come to the stock, to the public. And the public's going to say, 50 million? What am I getting for? More, more industrial space? Okay. From my perspective, it's just, it's a resident, okay? Is, are we trying to fill every square inch of Troy with something? A building, a school, a factory? That's not what Troy's all about, is to fill it up with something. Having some of these urban, or suburban and farm fields is what gives, gives a city some, some character. We don't want to wind up like, you know, the eastern, east coast of the United States, where it's every, every square foot is filled with a building or something. Don't forget about the character of the city. And you may be throwing that away after spending 50 million on it. Okay? This is not some little project. It's going to spend a lot of money, it's going to disrupt an awful lot of things, and there's no guarantee that that'll be part of Troy at all. It's probably 50/50, because I'm sure people in Pickla are looking at that saying, oh, that'd be a great place to, to, to own, or to control. So don't make this an ego contest between us and another city.
I agree.
It's the worst thing that could happen. Nobody wins an ego battle, okay? This is not, oh, we'll resolve this on a football field. This is business, okay? And somebody in the private sector is going to decide what happens with that, as well as the landowners. Once you put the water there, guess what's going to happen with the price of the land? It's going to be worth a lot more, isn't it? So it's going to be that much more difficult to develop. Just, I just want you to just slow down and be careful with this. This is a big project, and, uh, you've got to have some kind of return on it. Okay? Thank you.
Uh, so, Mr. Chair, just to, to address the ego part of it. The ego has nothing to do with it. We could certainly slow this down, um, and that's why we're here tonight. Do, do you want to, to go slowly? Do you want to be more aggressive? Do you just want to stay the way we are? Uh, ego has nothing to do with it, but it, you know, we, I did have to mention as full disclosure, that, you know, there's activity, uh, that, that's going on, not only in this area, but, but farther north. The, I, I will say, without getting too far into the weeds, you know, if we have lines that are there, then the businesses, they're not going to care where the, the utilities come from, they just want to make sure that they're adequate utilities, they can support the business, and that they, the, their extension costs are as minimal as possible. Uh, there is such a thing, uh, in the state of Ohio as, uh, something, FPAs, and I just drew a blank, thank you, facility planning areas that are, are controlled, and that, and that there are areas beyond each community corporate lines that dictate, in general, where you, uh, the utilities of a particular facility, in our case, our water and sewer plants, can, uh, can eventually support and supply. Um, and so, you know, you don't, one community can't, uh, cross that, uh, FPA boundary unilaterally. Those are things that are negotiated, there's some trade-offs sometimes, there's quid pro quos. Uh, so it's not about who, you know, who gets there first. We're not both right at the edges of our FPAs, uh, in a race to the finish. Uh, this is a three to five to 10 to whatever year process that you want, then to take, yes, the numbers are large, that's why we wanted to get with you, so that you understand that this isn't a couple hundred thousand dollars. This is something that, you know, if we're going to go down this path, we're going to do it deliberately, we're going to do it as cost-effectively as possible, but it's not the kind of staff effort that you want to expend if we, and we don't either, if we know that the desire and the direction is not there from the council.
Just one more question is, if, just-
Looking at a timeline, I think that's what we're talking about here, is that so, I think Mr. Reddick said that typically that a company coming in to build a large facility takes one to two years of due diligence, I think he said, right? And, um, and then you have planning and construction costs on top, more time. And so the question is, is that, what's our lead time on this thing? So say, for instance, we decide to build that red line, what are we, I mean, how much time are we talking about?
Yeah, we're not-
I mean, so the question is, could we say, well, you know, you guys, you guys are ready to go, here, we're going to build this line, and we're going to meet, and when you're ready to turn the key, you'll have water?
Yeah, we're not, we are not in any kind of position, nor did we have any intention on, on asking you, do you like alternative 1, 2, 3, or even a 4, 5, or 6? Okay? We're not at that level yet.
No, and that's not, that's not my question.
We're just saying that these are three recommendations that were made.
Right.
And, you know, uh, what we need to do, first of all, is, we, we need to let you know that, yes, you're, you commissioned a, or you budgeted for a comprehensive strategic plan, for, first for water and second for sewer. What we are, uh, asking you to consider as part of deciding whether you want to grow and how you want to grow, and how fast you want to grow, is we want to be in a position that once we get at least the preliminary recommendations from the water, uh, you know, community-wide plan, to be able to then pivot quickly, or at least concurrently, start looking at more detailed plans on beginning to move forward to address, you know, and make, uh, those properties that we identified, or close to those properties shovel-ready. Okay? How we do that, when we do that, as I think it was Mr. Pierce asked about timing, um, you know, of, of W1 versus W3, I think Jill mentioned that, you know, there's, there's not that much difference in the timeframe. It's just a matter of how quickly you want us to proceed. Do we, you know, do you want us to be deliberate and risk losing many more RFI opportunities? Uh, or do you want us to continue to move forward? We won't really know, I, I know it sounds like it's a roundabout way of answering your question, but until we get more data from the community master plan, and we dive into more of the details, I can't give you a better answer than that. I just want us, I just want to know, you know, is the staff on the right path? And is the council willing to be committed? Not knowing, you know, what the final numbers are or anything like that, there's, this is not a binding, uh, piece of, you know, resolution or a piece of legislation that we're asking for at this point, but do we continue to expend energy and make this a priority to keep moving forward, so that we can then come back with, to you with more information as we get it, so that we can keep on the path and continue to do our due diligence behind the scenes, so that you can make the most informed, detailed decisions at the point that we're ready to, to bring them to you?
Well, again, I, what I'm, I guess what I'm looking at is that we've heard that the, uh, the industry that may want to locate in Troy would be looking for a commitment of utilities and this type of thing. And so I think it, you know, council would be, uh, in my own opinion, I can't talk for anybody else on council, but I think this is something that, um, the answer to that is, yes, we'd be willing to give a commitment, but the, but the idea is, is that, you know, I can't, you know, fathom spending that type of money with the idea that there's nothing up there to connect to. So in other words, of my, my, what I'm looking at is saying, okay, that, yes, we want to, we would commit. If somebody came in and said, we want to build here, well, then we, we've got a commitment from council that they will make sure all the utilities that we provide are going to be there for you. But the question is, is a, is a timeline. In other words, that if it takes, if it takes a company four years to, from deciding it's, okay, we're going to locate in Troy to get a plant up and running, then do we have four years to be able to connect with the utilities? Or is that something that's take longer than that, or does it take less? I mean, that's, that's what I'm talking about, is that-
Sure.
I mean, realistically, if, if somebody of the magnitude that you're talking about came into Troy and said, well, yeah, this is where we want to do, and we've got, you know, we've got commitments, we have the land lined up, and we're going to take the two years due diligence and so on and so forth, then, can we then say, yeah, well, council's committed, and we're going to make sure that we get the utilities there for whatever you need?
We would, um, that is, that is a, a very good hypothetical. Um, I would love to say, you know, with 100%, yes, that's, you know, but it really depends, kind of like the discussion we had with weather events, you know, each one's unique. Each project that comes to us is unique as well. And, you know, uh, depending on what that project is, what type of business they want to get into, how in love with the community they are, how much commitment they're willing to make, that will drive, you know, their, um, how quickly they want to be there, and the quick, you know, and all we can do is tell them that this is where we're at, we've got council commitment to keep moving forward with X, Y, and Z, and we're moving ahead as quickly as we can. Uh, you know, if, if the company comes back and says, well, you know, if we put additional resources into it, which is not out of the, out of the, you know, the realm of possibilities, if, if a, if a business of any magnitude wants to come in and they want us to speed it up, and there's any way for us to do that, then we go back to them and say, well, okay, we can talk to the state, we can talk and, and see if there are grants to help us do that, but in a pinch, it's going to cost X millions of dollars or X amount of dollars to do this, are you willing to pay a business to, to get us to, to be able to do it quicker? It's a what-if, it, you know, and it really just depends on the type of project, the magnitude of the project-
The impact.
And, you know, that's where we start talking to Jobs Ohio and the DDC and some of our regional partners about incentive programs and, and support to get that done quicker than maybe a normal timeline would allow us to. But we can't even tell them, you know, the company, yes, council's committed, this is what we've done, this is what's on the record so far, you know, until we have this discussion tonight and confirm that you're willing to do that.
You going to send around like a questionnaire that we can answer? Or is this something, I mean, where do we go from here, I guess, is the, the next question?
If you sit down, we'll give everybody their-
Okay, that's, I just, yeah, okay.
I don't want to, I don't want to do it. All right. Everybody has their questions answered and one to be asked?
We will do this like we did before. And we'll just go around, and all the council people can give their views.
You look at this?
And since Mrs. Snee's been so-
And since Mrs. Snee's been so quiet tonight, we'll start over here on the left.
I, I'll just say that I've been hearing about the limited amount of land we have for some time. I'm really surprised to see the actual numbers put to that of requests and proposals that we have to pass on because we don't have the land available. So I think it's important that we have a proactive plan for the future. I can see that happening concurrently with the apparent interest and requests from the private sector. So if you're asking for our input, I would say, yes, make this a staff priority, and move ahead with the planning necessary for having the utility supplies for this particular site.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. I concur with Mrs. Snee also in talking to some of our county and area's largest builders, whether it's in home development or business. They have put forth the same sentiment that she was talking about. And in thinking of competing against another city, that has never been any conversation that I've been a part of or heard from anyone. Plus, quite honestly, the city of Troy has got the capacity to service everybody. Our rate structure is very cost effective in comparison to anybody around us. And again, we do need to keep expanding our tax base and other things. Coming to a standstill, it will not, will take five minutes for any interest in the city of Troy going forward for businesses to want to come here and retain, be able to retain the employees that we have. With the existing businesses, as Mr. Tiderington indicated, cycles come and go. We have one business with 60 employees that will be leaving us soon. So replacement and that sort of thing comes into play with growth, and that's where we need to go with. So yes, I'm in complete lockstep with Mrs. Snee's opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Twist?
I am supportive for us to pursue this. I do think it is something that we continually need to be on the forefront of attracting different types of businesses. As you diversify in investments, we're doing the same thing here, diversifying in what we have in the city of Troy to help navigate the natural ups and downs of any business that might be there. So I'm in support.
Mr. Whitten?
Yeah, I'm in support as well. I think it is, as Mrs. Snee and Mr. Phillips said, and I think you need to be in the forefront, and don't take a back, be in the back step. So I agree, I think staff should move forward with planning.
Mrs. Westhall?
I'm also in support of it. This city had a different industrial base 50 years ago. It's constantly changing, we have to adapt to those things. It's a huge chunk of money. I look forward to seeing the funding mechanisms, and I know our staff will look for the most cost effective way to make that happen.
Mr. Peter? Do you want to come up?
Doesn't matter.
I can talk, but I'll come up. I'm sure some of the people in attendance, for probably a generation, can remember going on 41 towards Covington and seeing a sign that said Troy Mall. That is now occupied by Walmart, Lowe's, et cetera, because people who sat in our chairs 30 years ago had the foresight to put in the infrastructure necessary for that type of improvement. And I applaud the staff for bringing this forth, so that we can have those types of discussions. And I think we do need to look not in 2025, but where does the city want to be in 2050? And so I would strongly support this.
Jeff? Yeah, again, I think this is something we have to look at. I think the planning process, the master plans is an important next step, and see what they provide. But yeah, it, to me, makes some sense, is that we want to continue to expand our industrial base. So I would say, let's start moving forward on this cautiously, and see what, see what we come up with. I think it'd be an interesting, interesting project.
No, I mean, they can, we need to move forward, but they should be cautiously.
Mrs. Marshall, I'll tell you from a recording standpoint, the audience that would be listening would never hear you back there.
They don't really like me, anyway. I definitely think that it's something to look at, but I agree with Mr. Schilling. It's, we need to be cautious about it. Like, I want to know more details financially before I make a decision, oh, I think this is the way we should go, this way, this way, the red line, blue line, whatever. But, I mean, details. I think keeping us informed, even on something you think is small, is important, so, yeah, I guess.
So I really appreciate the, Patrick, you're bringing this forward, and Snee's staff working on this. I believe that Troy, in order to continue to be in existence and keep growing, we have to grow our industrial base and our taxation that comes with that. And I look forward to seeing the details on this project, seeing the funding mechanisms, and seeing how this works out. I think it's a good thing for our city and our community.
I don't get to vote on this, but I will tell you that the city of Troy has an amazing and vibrant reputation in the entire region. People are looking to see what Troy's going to do, because they know we are tight on land. And working with the DDC, Jobs Ohio, they know that we're limited in what we can do. So the region is looking at us to see what we're going to do. They know that Troy is an amazing place to live and to do business. We have businesses that want to come here. And it is disheartening to have to say, we can't compete, we have nothing to offer. I think it's important to look down the road, and Todd said it best, you know, people were in these seats before, and got us to the point where we're at. And it's kind of like the schools. 100 years ago, the schools were put in place, and it's up to us now to take care of those and provide new schools. That was done a while ago. Now it's up to this council and this administration to take care of the city of Troy, and to help it grow, to help it stay vibrant. So looking forward to that. This is, again, huge, but it can be done, and it's long-term planning.
So, as the mayor, I don't have a vote either. I'm very pleased to hear the comments of the council, that they all have the wisdom and looking forward to progress, and to recommend, apparently unanimously, for the staff to continue looking at this. Personal pet peeve is, this should have been, we should constantly be doing this. And that's my complaint before, we don't have any land for a long, long, long time in my lifetime. And I think for those, Mr. Twist, Mr. Whitten, myself, Jeff, Christie, things are very different than when we grew up, very business, very, many businesses have been gone, and some have been replaced, which is good, and we've been able to survive because of planning and working with different people. So the recommendation from council is to go forward unanimously.
Very good, thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned.